Roll call, please.
Eva Henry, Jan Palowski, Bill Holland, Nancy Sharp, Elise Jones, David Beckham, Tim Mock, Kristy Panganello, Anthony Graves, Robin Knech, Kevin Flynn, Roger Partridge, Dave Weaver, Gail Watson, Dunn Rosier, Libby Zabo, Bob Pfeifer.
Here.
Bob Roth.
Here.
Larry Videm, David Spelman, Aaron Brockett, Ann Justin, Lynn Baca, George Teal.
George Teal.
George Teal.
He's here.
Doris Trulard. Ron Engels. Catherine Hyder, Laura Christman, Alex Brown, Richard Champion, Gail Christie, Rick Teeter, Debbie Nasta, Steve Conklin, Kara Swanson.
On the line.
Thank you. Joe Jefferson, Steve Yates, Jeff Deacon, Mark Gruber, Daniel Dick, Carolyn Sharp.
Here.
Lisa Jones, Laura Brown, Lynette Kelsey.
Here.
Scott Norquist, Storm Glor, Soshikara Graves, Casey Brown, Ron Rakowski, Mike Hillman, Brad Weasley, Stephanie Walton, Shakti. Jerry Dean, Phil Sernanek.
Along with Mayor Rakowski, go tribe.
Jackie Malley. I know she's here. Joan Peck, Gabe Santos.
Jackie Malley.
Ashley Stolzmann, Bob Muckel, Connie Sullivan, Dan Greenberg, Colleen Whitlow, Joyce Pelazuski, Deborah Jerome, Sean Forey, Chris Larson, Kyle Mullica, Jordan Sowers, John Dyak.
Here.
Sally Daigle, Gary Howard, Rita Dozal, Sandy Pennington, Anna Metkowski, Eric Montoya, Herb Atchison, Joyce J., Roger Partridge.
All right. Attachment A is a summary of the October 5, 2016 Board Session Workshop, or Board Session, Board Work Session Minutes. Any comments, questions, additions? Seeing none, we'll accept them as is. I have two items that are not on the agenda that I just wanted to mention. We have a new alternate from Federal Heights. Carolyn Sharp is here, so I want to welcome her to the table.
Welcome, Carolyn.
I can do both.
Oh, look at the time. And I know that Casey's been here for board meetings, but I think it's the first time for a work session. So Casey Brown is the alternate from Golden. Thank you. Oh, look at the, look at the time. So the other thing I wanted to mention is if you're in the room, you don't need to be logged on to WebEx. So if you are logged on to WebEx, please unlog on, because it tends to mess with our system. So if you're on remote, obviously you need to be logged on. But if you're in the room, please don't be logged on to WebEx on your device or phone. The other thing I wanted to mention is just a quick update on the process for the nominating committee. So as a reminder, the, there are six members of the nominating committee. One is a member from Denver. The immediate past chair selects a member, the chair, the board as a whole, the P and E committee, and the finance committee. Those are the six, the six folks.
Just a slight correction. The immediate past chair sits on the committee. She doesn't actually nominate somebody.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Okay, all right. So those are the six members. And part of the reason I mentioned that is because at tonight's P and E meeting, we will be choosing the person who will represent that committee on the nominating committee. So if you are interested in serving on the nominating committee, please see Director Atchison, and he will include your name for consideration at tonight's meeting. The board and the finance committee will both be choosing theirs on the meeting of November 16. So please make sure that either Bob Pfeifer or John Dyak know for the finance committee, and Elise Jones knows for the board, if you're interested in serving on the nominating committee. All clear? All right. So where the next item is Agenda Item 4, which is Public Comment. The chair does ask that no public comment be offered for items that we've already had an Agenda Item for previously. Is there anybody in the public that would like to address the board this evening? Seeing nobody, we will move on to Agenda Item 5. So I wanted to mention Jacob Rieger is going to go through this with us, and you'll, I'm sure, notice that there were three attachments behind this. Attachment 1 and 2 go into quite a bit of detail regarding the actual presentation that Mr. Rieger is going to give us. And that is the Active Transportation and the Transportation Freight Plan. So Items, excuse me, Attachments 1 and 2, we're going to kind of forego for the moment. We're going to allow Mr. Rieger to go through his slide presentation, which will cover that information. But after he's finished, if there's anything in Attachments 1 or 2 that you have specific questions on, we'll field them at that time. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Rieger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you all. So first thing I wanted to acknowledge is that I know there's a lot of slides in the packet for this item. We're going to be efficient. We're going to hit the highlights. So I think we'll, I think we'll get through it well. But we do want to be transparent and collaborative with you in the work that we're doing for you. So as the chair said, I'm trying to pull out some highlights from both of these sections of our transportation plan. Kind of first and foremost, as a reminder, that we started talking about last month at the beginning of sort of the orientation of our Metrovision Transportation Plan. We said that it integrates all the work that you've been doing on Metrovision, integrates the transportation strategic planning work that you've done, and it literally is going to include the transportation theme from Metrovision within the 2040 Regional Transportation Plan. That plan, I'm going to call it, again, as I said last month, the MVRTP, so I don't have to say those long words all night. The 2040 MVRTP also includes our fiscally constrained 20-year regional transportation plan, which is a federal requirement. So this is really our long-range transportation plan that integrates Metrovision with our other, the other things that we do in transportation. So starting last month, I wanted to pull out some kind of key topics to talk with you about. Last month, we had an orientation on the MVRTP itself, as well as we talked about what we're calling the Coordinated Transit Plan. This month, as the chair mentioned, we're going to talk about bicycle and pedestrian, what we're calling Active Transportation, as well as freight and goods movement. So, you know, first and foremost, when we talk about Active Transportation, what is it? You know, typically, we're talking about walking and bicycling, but it's really sort of propulsion by your own power. So it is walking, bicycling, you know, mostly sort of non-motorized ways that we all get around. Kind of four main topic areas that I'll cover briefly in this presentation, that are covered in the attachment in your, in your item for this. Existing conditions, you know, where we're at now, where we're going in the future, kind of maybe what our sort of vision or desired state is by 2040, and then how do we get there? And as I go through this presentation, I want to acknowledge the, the work that's really been done on this and put into this by Melina Dempsey up here on the side, who is our Bicycle and Pedestrian and TDM Planner. So any difficult questions you have on this material when we're done, she will be happy to answer. So how many trips are made by bicycling, walking the region each day? So this was in your packet, but I don't think the packet revealed the animation of the answers. So anyone want to take a guess? See? Our past chair is correct, so good job. And in saying this, I, I kind of want to emphasize that this is probably sort of understating the true level, particularly of walking activity. Most trips begin and end, you know, by walking, even if you're just kind of walking to your car, or walking to the transit station, or walking to your final destination. So this is frankly, probably even a little bit of an undercount. It's even more than this. Looking at, you know, again, sort of existing conditions, our facilities, looking at both bicycle, bicycling pedestrian facilities. We have about 2,300 miles of bicycle facilities that we've calculated through GIS analysis. And we have about 18,000 miles of pedestrian facilities, primarily sidewalks through our plan of metrics data, which is our sort of data that measures the built environment. And again, probably even more than this, because plan of metrics only measure sidewalks that are five feet or, or smaller. So it even isn't able to capture everything, but still quite a bit. Yes, sorry. Sorry, thank you. Yes, five feet or larger. So some of those smaller, older sidewalks maybe are not quite being captured. Bicycle facilities in particular, sort of a majority, you know, much of the bicycle facilities that we have are multi-use trails, as you see there about 1,500 miles worth. But, you know, on-street facilities, on-road facilities, we're starting to build protected bike lanes. So we have a variety of types of bicycle facilities in this region. We map this, and this is in our data portal on our website, where you can actually go to this. This is kind of interactive, where you can click on things and look at things. But again, this is, this is a sort of static map, and the dynamic one is on our website of our bicycle facilities. We actually work with all of you, your jurisdictions, your staff each year, to get sort of that data on an annual basis. And then we, we geocoded in GIS and put it together into this. So this is something that really comes from all of you. Pedestrian side types of facilities. We have a, and this is in the report that was in, that's in your packet, sort of a gallery of photos illustrating different types of both pedestrian and bicycle facilities. I'm not going to click on the links here, but unless you want to see them. But again, those, the sort of gallery of photos is in the report. But the point here is that, you know, we, we have a real variety of facilities, you know, both in terms of the actual facilities that we have, the character of those facilities. Definitely not a one-size-fits-all, a lot of variation throughout the region. Looking at kind of mo-chair to work, so these are work trips. Walking, we have about 37,000 people walking to work every day. Bicycling, bicycling about 20,000 per day. I would ask that you not focus so much on the hard numbers. These do change every time we run the model. And we're actually working really hard to finish the next major iteration of our regional traffic model. So these numbers are going to change a little bit. It's more about sort of relative, you know, comparison and relationships. What I'd point out, maybe on this table, is that walking over the past 25 years, you know, we have gone down a little bit, but it has been relatively steady since about 2000. And we're coming back up from sort of the low that we reached during the recession. Bicycling, though it's a small amount by percentage, it is a large number of trips. And bicycling has almost doubled in this region over the last 25 years. And again, this is just work trips, not all trips.
Jacob?
Yes.
Director Sernanek.
Thank you. Not sure if you want to take questions while you're going through this, but in this regard, one of the things that I was wondering as I was reading through the document is whether bikes being used for business purposes get captured in this. Because you have couriers, you have deliveries, you have pedicabs that are out there. And at least bicycle deliveries, in some areas, I've seen pick up. So I was wondering is whether that's captured at all or recognized.
So I'm going to stare at Steve Cook and ask him to. So he says no. So what I'll say about that is that that's a good point. Our model does the best it can. But, you know, particularly on bicycling and even more on walking, it's hard to capture every sort of, you know, type of trip. You know, if you park and you're going to a Broncos game, you know, may not necessarily capture that. Or if I park in your beautiful city, which I do, you know, maybe at the overflow lot to get to the downtown Littleton Light Rail Station, it's not necessarily capturing some of those short trips. So every time that we, each iteration of the model, we do a lot better. But there's a lot of activity out there that we're still trying to capture.
And my, my second question is then, in the area of folks that are utilizing bikes to take care of their first or last half-mile or mile issue. You know, every time I pass a bus, I'm noticing that at least one of the bike carriers are on that. And I've noticed quite frequently on Light Rail, folks will be using a bike in conjunction. What do you do with that multi-multi-modal commute?
So again, kind of staring at Steve Cook, our modeling manager. We do the best that we can to capture it, but sometimes on those sort of multi-multi-trips, it can be hard to capture every segment of activity in that trip. So sometimes, you know, in certain conditions, some of those things are captured, but probably not all of them. And so you're raising good points. I think the sort of bottom line is that there's even more activity here than probably what we're stating.
Well, let me just add, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it, it captures the primary mode of that, of that trip.
Correct. And I want to point out, sorry, Jacob, the data here isn't from the model. It's from the Census Bureau. And the data here is on your journey to work. So this is people filling out the Census Bureau forms every year, every 10 years. And what it actually is, the way the question is actually worded, is how did you usually get to work last week? And so because of that, it takes, one, you know, kind of your primary mode, as was just mentioned, but also it misses out on some of the people that may use a certain mode only one or two days a week. They may drive most of the time, and then on nice weather days, when it's really nice, they may walk or ride their bike. So the Census inherently misses some of that type of stuff. So that's why, as Jacob mentioned, some of these numbers are really probably in reality higher than this. And that's what I am working on with the modelers, to have our model do more of that, those types of being able to capture some of those other trips. Thanks, Steve. Now Jacob doesn't have to stare at you so much.
Yeah. So Steve and I have developed sign language. We can communicate signals on these questions. Now, these are all good points, and yeah, please feel free to ask questions along the way. So, you know, as Steve just said, we're talking about work trips. You know, now let's kind of talk about all trips. You know, 13 million total trips, about 7% roughly are made by walking and bicycling. Again, with all the caveats that we've just said, probably understating the level of bicycle and pedestrian activity. But a lot of trips out there, and they're growing. Let's talk about safety. This is sort of intuitive, but it's a point that we can't stress strongly enough here, which is that pedestrians and bicyclists are our most vulnerable transportation users. They have a high level of injury severity in the event of a crash, and they're disproportionately high percentage of traffic fatalities, unfortunately. So, you know, 6% for example, of trips made by walking, yet there are 20% of traffic fatalities were pedestrians. So safety is paramount. This is something that we're all focusing on, us and you. These, you know, again, these are our most vulnerable users in the transportation system. Every day, we read something in the paper, and it's just tragic. Some characteristics on pedestrian safety. 61% of pedestrian crashes occur mostly on arterial streets. 77% of crashes involve a vehicle going straight, so, you know, straight on, on the roadway. And 60% of fatal pedestrian crashes occur mid-block, and that's because the cars are going faster and more likely to result tragically in a fatality, pedestrian fatality. Bicycling side, you know, this is, there's really no good news here, but it's sort of good news, bad news, is that if you are, if you, sorry, if you, if you are, if you're a bicyclist involved in a crash, you are likely not to have a fatality, which is good. Only 12% result in a fatality or serious injury. But the bad news is if you're a bicyclist involved in a crash, 80% of bicycle crashes resulted in injury through 2014. So, and 74% of bicycle crashes occur at an intersection. This is because, again intuitively, there's so much going on at intersection, cars coming from all directions, a lot of activity. So that's where you tend to see bicycle crashes. So let's get from the bad news and maybe a little bit of the good news about benefits of active transportation. And as I present these, you know, this, this is meant to be sort of suggestive. Some of this is maybe correlation as much as causation, but you're sort of looking for some of the positive a little bit in this about active transportation. So for example, we know from the Census about 70,000 households in our region don't have an automobile, whether that's because they choose not to have one, or because they, they can't have one, you know, whatever reason they don't have one. So a robust bicycle pedestrian network can provide cost-effective mobility options for some folks who, you know, folks of all ages, abilities, and incomes, who can use that. Over 1 million drive-alone trips are made daily that are equal or less than the average bike-and-walk trip distance. So what that tells us is that at least where you have a good network, and it's convenient and safe and attractive as a mode of transportation, that opting to walk or bike in lieu of driving alone, you know, can be part of the answer to helping reduce congestion, air pollution, greenhouse gas, and VMT. And these are the very things that we've been focusing on in, in Metrovision. You know, from the health side of things, 1 in 2 US adults is living with a chronic disease, and 2/3 are overweight or obese. 27% of children in our great state are obese or overweight. And this isn't meant to be critical. We're all, you know, we're all focusing on this. But walking and bicycling, you know, can of course help reduce or mitigate obesity, stress, and chronic disease. Part of the solution, along with other things. Economically, these are cost-effective modes. They can often be constructed at relatively low cost. Demonstration pilot and interim design projects, you know, are kind of easy to do, bicycle pedestrian projects. And frankly, it can be an economic development tool. And I think this is an interesting quote from the Downtown Denver Partnership, which if you can't see it on the slide, says, "The number-one thing they want," meaning businesses, you know, looking at business relocation, business retention, "the number-one thing they want is bike lanes." 10 years ago, we never would have thought that walkability or bike lanes would be economic development tools. But you know what, they are these days. And I think just about all of our communities are building, whether it's new downtowns, or suburban town centers, or what have you, that have these walkability and bikeability features. So looking towards the future a little bit, and again, not getting, you know, too focused on, on actual numbers, because these will change again as we do additional model runs with our increasingly fancy new model. But the point here is that both walking and bicycling are going to increase substantially by 2040. And hopefully, you know, with all the work that we've done on Metrovision, you know, that we can, Metrovision will help inform in the things that you're doing in your communities will help make that true. So, you know, sort of where do we want to be by 2040?
Jacob?
Yes.
Director Sernanek.
Jacob, on the, in building in some of this, I know Steve mentioned that a lot of the data is coming from the Census Bureau. Question is, with items like B-Cycle and like the, and it would be too quick to get information from like Golden's Bike Library that they have, but how are those having any impact at all? And has that been included in any of this analysis so far?
It was a look across the bow and a shaking of a head, no.
There's that, there's that sign language.
Right. I mean, I think we do have some anecdotal information. Like, for example, my last two days I've taken B-Cycle, there's been no bike at the station, which is, is an issue which I've addressed. With them, I've called. But, but no, I don't think we have anything specifically about, you know, success or failures of B-Cycle that I can think of. But as far as first-last-mile component, I mean, I know it's tremendously successful. I think of myself, I get off at a Tenth and O Sage Station, and I'm never the only one who's getting a bike at that station, so.
I'll let Melina fill in on that also. But we have the individual data of individual things, and that's probably, I'll bet, where you're going in terms of, we know how many people use B-Cycle in Boulder and Denver and things like that. Just from the, from this regional modeling perspective, we don't really have that all completely built into the model yet from the regional perspective.
And I was just going to build, you know, upon what Steve just said. While it may not be built into our model, I know B-Cycle does a great job at tracking their data. And they do that in conjunction with surveys to find out how many new users, how many are visitors versus residents, et cetera. So that data can be obtained from B-Cycle. And we have funded through our TDM pool both B-Cycle projects in Denver and Boulder, and we just funded the Golden Bike Library. So they're all, they have to report numbers to us, and they all have shown an increase. We do not have any data yet from the Golden Bike Library, but we should have that in probably about a year and a half.
Follow-on. You mentioned that 70,000 households choose not to have automobile or do not have automobiles.
Right.
Do we know how many households have bikes or cannot afford a bike?
I do not have, I do not have that information.
No. No, because there's no registration of bicycles. That's, that's how we get our information.
So Director Sernanek, we'd really appreciate you calling the Census and giving them some of this good sort of input. Exactly. Exactly.
Director Malley, did you have your hand up a minute ago? Director Atchison. Director Atchison.
Yeah, Bob, you've got Brad Calvert's been trying to get your attention.
Oh, I was trying to get Jacob. Just, we actually, something that the board will hear about probably in the next month or two, maybe three months, is we did a survey that previously, back in 2009, 2010 timeframe, when we did it, it was called the WHOIS TOD Survey, that surveyed people living near transit stations, both existing and future. And we actually did ask about both auto and bike ownership for those households. So again, it's, it's not the entire region, but for those that are living in areas that maybe would be classified as mixed-use and multimodal, that may take advantage of those transportation options, we will be sharing some information. There's actually, bike ownership is very interesting. It doesn't necessarily go the way that you think it would in terms of household type. So we can share that with you. And again, not the whole region, but it's a reasonable subset. About 2,500 households.
Director Atchison.
Yeah, Jacob, you and Steve mentioned the B-Cycle. Well, that's one provider of those cycles. I happen to have Zagster, and I have five stations in my city where these bikes are set up. Are you guys able to collect data from Zagster? Because that's just another piece of information, but not necessarily B-Cycle.
Right. We know there's more than B-Cycle, and to the extent that those vendors, you know, make the data available, you know, we'd absolutely like to have that.
So I take it you don't have anything from them?
Not sure if we.
I, we don't have anything from them. The only reason we have collected data from B-Cycle is because we did fund some projects through the TDM pool, and we also funded the Golden Bike Library. So we will be getting data from them. As we do start working on the Active Transportation Plan next year, these are definitely, all these points being brought up are really good. And, and I've been taking notes so we can potentially incorporate all of those ideas if we do a survey for the region. You know, again, surveys are really expensive to conduct, and we're working with a limited budget. But I think these are really great questions to include in the survey if we do conduct one.
Well, if you need a contact for Zagster, at least for us, just send me a note of who you want them to contact. We'll get it to them.
Okay.
Because their contract is with us.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Director Shakti.
It might also be interesting to know about households that have less cars than adults. And I don't, I don't know if you could do that with the Census data or not.
Yeah, that's something we can look at.
It's less relevant if they have more cars than adults, because they can't drive them all at once.
Right.
Mr. Rieger.
Okay. No, really appreciate all these, all these great questions and things that, for us to think about. So kind of looking forward to 2040, again, sort of, you know, at a broad level, where do we think we might want to be? You know, obviously, increasing walking and bicycling mo-chair beyond what is projected currently in our model. Although again, those projections, you know, will continue to change, particularly as we implement Metrovision. And you all do the things that you do in your communities. Can we do even more? Providing a robust walking and bicycling network for people of all ages and abilities. And obviously, improving the safety of pedestrian bicycle network, thereby reducing and striving to eliminate serious injuries, crashes, and fatalities. So again, these are sort of intuitive, but I mean, these are big picture things that are important. So how do we, you know, what are some strategies to help start doing some of these things? One is to talk about building what's called a low-stress or a high-comfort network. We have a lot of this already in the Denver region, but we can always do more, and we're all collectively doing more on this. doing more on this. And really, what this means is, you know, building facilities and building an environment for walking and bicycling that attracts the most sort of type of range of user as possible. So, you know, to pick on Steve Cook again, he's a very experienced bicyclist. He can bicycle anywhere. I'm not. My stepkids are not, right? So, can we build environments and encourage children, people who aren't, you know, sort of those, you know, very experienced bicyclists to give it, to try it out, give it a try? That's what we're talking about here. Connecting the network. This means connecting that low-stress network. Continuity and consistency in the network. You know, for those that do bicycle, how many times have you ever been down a road or a street? And, you know, you start with maybe a bike lane, and then you go to a shero, and then you go to a wide shoulder, you know, in the space of a few blocks. So, having a little bit of that consistency, as well as, you know, filling in some of the gaps in the network. And of course, I'd be remiss not mentioning first-and-final-mile connections and how important we all know that those are. Another idea here, something called multimodal transportation nodes, the idea of clustering mobility options and amenities at popular destinations, transit stations, and urban and town, urban town and suburban centers. And we were actually reviewing a, looking at a jurisdiction's comprehensive plan recently for something else, but saw this idea in there as well. Union Station is, you know, of course, the classic example, but it's not the only example. And again, almost every community here, I think, is starting to do something like this. Complete streets, so safely accommodating motorized and active transportation users of all ages and abilities along the street network. The point I'd make here is that it doesn't necessarily have to look like this particular example. You need to do what's right and what fits in your community. But again, these are things that most of you are already doing. Supporting infrastructure and technology, so things like shelters at transit stops, landscaping even, bicycle parking, signs and wayfinding, apps, you know, in our app-based technology world of real-time multimodal trip planning, all those things that go into, you know, making an active transportation network, you know, more convenient, more accessible, and more usable. So, what's our role in all this? You know, clearly, through the tip, you know, funding bike and ped projects. In our current 2016 to 21 tip, about 22% of the funds were allocated directly to bicycle pedestrian projects. And those projects, all of those projects selected for funding were either protected or grade separated from the roadway. And then there were additional dollars on other roadway projects that had bicycle pedestrian components in them. You know, same for transit and some of these other things as well. So, Melina kind of gave away my final answer on all of your very good questions. We will, we're about to do an active transportation plan where we can look at many of these things that you've raised today, and we really appreciate it. But that is the big next step for us. We're going to kick that off later next, later this year, early next year, of doing a true active transportation plan over the next, you know, 12 to 16 months or so. And then, when that's done, incorporating that into the Metrovision Regional Transportation Plan. So, what you have in your packet is the active transportation component is the first step to do that.
Director Kneech.
Thank you. Director Brockett and I are in the bright light here. So, if there's a halo around me, it's just a coincidence. I, I have this question kind of both about this section as well as the next one, and glancing at them. They, they read so much more like a report to me, with just like a couple very vague goals. And is that kind of, I mean, I guess I'm used to the regional transportation plan, which is like, we have this set of projects and priorities. And, and so, is, am I right in identifying, is that, is that really the goal here? This is a very, I call it maybe a plan-light, and then there's going to be something that's a little more specific and goal-oriented and future-oriented? Because, so, and I have the same question about the freight section. It just, it's kind of reads like a report to me more so than like, here's what we're going to do, or here's what our goals are.
Yeah, that is somewhat intentional, just in the sense that these sections in our current Metrovision Regional Transportation Plan are in the part of the plan where we sort of profile and talk about our multimodal transportation system. We talk about the facilities that we have, who's using them, what are the characteristics. So, these are a significant expansion of those profiles. But you're right, Director Kneech, they're not plans in and of themselves for a couple reasons. One is that, at least right now, on both of these, and I was actually going to say this in the freight section, so you're helping, when we get there, to make that point, that, you know, these aren't plans in the sense of identifying projects, in part because of federal rules about how we do that through the regional transportation planning process. This is really setting a framework of information, education, you know, collaboration, particularly in the freight, as you'll hear me talk about in a moment. So, they're not, they're not meant to be mini-plans, but they are meant to support the larger plan. And really, from that sort of policy or strategic framework perspective, you know, trying to align that with Metrovision. We don't want to have sort of separate things after all the work that you've done.
Doug, did you have something to add?
I did. I, you know, thank you for that comment, because I, you know, I, when you read it, it reads exactly like you say. And we're aware of that. But I will say, with the, with the Active Transportation Plan that we're planning on developing, I don't know, we might stop short of actually having projects as part of that. But I think we will, we'll develop that system, have it like tiered system, what facilities are more important than others, kind of like our functional classification system for roadways, that type of thing. Then, you know, then we would draw priorities, we would prioritize the selection of projects, hopefully based on that, that tiering of the system.
Got it.
I saw you, Director Malley, but I'm gonna, oh, real quick.
One quick follow-up.
Please.
So, so that makes sense, and I'm not urging us to do more work than we need to at this point. But I didn't know then, will that later phase of more detailed planning include stakeholders? Because these, these have kind of been, I think, staff-created, a little bit, you used interviews, you did from the other processes, but there'll be stakeholders involved in more detailed planning?
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks. Sorry.
I'm gonna go to Melina real quick.
And I just wanted to clarify that the, the Active Transportation Plan, when we're done with that, that will actually replace this small section that we have, this 20 pages. So, that will become part of the regional transportation plan and adopted into that.
Director Malley.
And I get, I guess, and just some additional guidance regarding the Active Transportation Plan. I think, I hope it's going to take a look at the needs of various communities, because I appreciate Tammy Dorr's comment regarding economic development, and that bike lanes and pedestrian walkability is important. But I think each of, and the City of Lone Tree has invested in, in improving bike mobility in our community, and actually taken out road lanes to do it. But, but I think the solutions for the suburban communities are going to be different solutions than what's needed in a downtown Denver environment. And so, I hope that, that you're going to take a holistic look at all of that and address the urban, suburban, and the urban areas, urbanized areas within suburbia as well.
Most definitely.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, very good point. Also, you know, there's a lot of work being done in our region right now, in this area, right? About, there's, there, I know, Rappel County's doing a plan, I think Boulder's doing a plan, Denver's doing a plan. So, we're not going to, I mean, we're not going to recreate the wheel with this, too. We're going to make sure that we incorporate all, all the vision and thought that went into those plans as well, as, as we go forth with this over the next 12 to 16 months. We're in the process of scoping this out now. We have had meetings with stakeholders to give them some concept of what we're thinking, getting some input from them. But we're real close. We're hoping to have something out on the street by the end of this year. Melina, yeah?
Other questions on the Active Transportation? Director Beckham?
My question goes back to this section, and it's better to talk about this before we get to freight. But several places in, in the report, it said that it deals with bicyclists of all abilities. And the issues come up in broomfield about the issues of elderly that are not necessarily as strong a bikers as some people, and then the partially disabled or disabled. And none of the transportation plans seem to really deal with the issue that would help those people, which are things like electric-assist bike for the elderly, and some of the other wheelchairs and stuff. And it would appear that we should at least be talking about it in some degree, even if we're not dealing with a solution to it. It was just a concern I have, and it's come up in broomfield, so.
Okay, in the queue, I have Graves and Pfeiffer. Director Graves?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This actually plays a bit on what Director Beckham was just talking about. On the slide, we're talking a bit about both bike infrastructure and technology. As the number of bikes increase in the environment, I think additional conversations about overtake areas or rest stops, or if, you know, you blow a tire out, you're not occupying sidewalk space or being endangered with oncoming traffic. So, I wonder whether or not staff has had conversations about how that fits in this larger infrastructure investment. And if not, we might want to consider doing that going forward.
Director Pfeiffer.
To build on the last two speakers, yeah, we're, we're actually going to start talking about e-bikes and ordinances, because obviously, I think we all have some sort of ordinance around it. But also, we're looking at ordinances of changing, you know, bikes being on sidewalks, too, not necessarily on bike lanes. So, we're looking at eight-foot sidewalks that would allow that. So, I, I think we should keep that in mind, the e-bikes and, and technology changing. That, that's a, that's becoming a larger topic in our community as well. So, yeah, I had one more, but I can't remember now. Oh, I do actually remember. We do have repair stations, and I think that's a key thing. We actually built in city repair stations on key routes that helps you fix your bike, that are fixed stations, and has all the tools to do it. You should promote that, too, as well. It's been very useful for our community.
Director Christman.
This kind of crosses into the freight thing, but I've noticed, this is totally subjective, this is, but the delivery trucks are using the bike lanes to park as they make deliveries, which I think seriously impacts safety, and is just a disaster. And I don't know if that's something that we can have any impact on. But the bike lanes become useless if they're full of trucks. Well, that's it, you know. They don't care. Yeah, I, I don't know if there's a solution other than to block the lane so they can't pull it over. I, I don't know.
What about that little yellow thing they call a boot? No.
Yeah.
If you're fast enough.
Yeah.
Other comments or questions on the Active Participa, or, excuse me, Active Transportation? We have had active participation as well. All right, moving on then to freight section.
Okay. So, first, you know, Director Kneech kind of made this point for me already, but as with Active Transportation, we're not, you know, trying to do these sort of mini-plans. But particularly on freight, when, when the freight industry, you know, they sort of do their planning, in a sense. But what we're trying to do here is, you know, communication, collaboration, data, information, those sorts of things. But particularly raising the awareness of freight issues. And freight is one of those things in particular, that, you know, we all know kind of a little bit about freight, but it's sort of off to the side, and it's, it's becoming an, sort of increasing emphasis to be front and center. And I'll talk about some of the ways in which that is so. So, even getting, you know, raising awareness of these issues and connecting the freight industry to decision-makers, and that's, that's a role that we've tried to play as well. We've had several meetings with BNSF, trying to do the same with Union Pacific, but trying to, trying to make those connections and, and see what can be done. Let me come back and make one other point on this slide. So, I said federal and state emphasis increasing. The FAST Act has a lot of freight sort of components within it. I'm going to talk about coordination, CDOT, on freight, because that's kind of a, a big thing on the freight, the subject of freight. And we do, along with the Active Transportation Plan, in our work program, we have a task to do a regional freight movement study. Again, this is the first sort of iteration of it, and the work that we're going to take on with CDOT will end up sort of expanding it and replacing it. And I'll talk about that when we get there. This is just sort of a visual, both in this piece of the presentation, as well as the written material in your packet, of just kind of the organization of the information that's being covered, you know, both sort of on the federal side, the guidance, the requirements, stakeholder input that we have heard and continue to hear from the freight industry and others, networks and facilities. There's, there's a lot around sort of what, what are freight networks, what is freight, commodity flow data. I'm not really going to get into that too much, but I'll sort of mention it. And then some other related important topics around freight. So, what is freight and good movement? I think we know it's everything that's on the screen. But I think what we're all thinking about is that these days, it's other things. It's drones, it's Uber, it's app-based delivery, it's, you know, Amazon deliveries, you know, I said drones, but you know, that's sort of just-in-time deliveries. It's a whole bunch of things that, you know, maybe even didn't exist five or 10 years ago. The very definition of what is freight, how that freight is being delivered to us, and what that means for both freight mobility and our larger transportation system, I think we're all still trying to figure out together. And this is rapidly evolving. Here's an example. We've all gotten these when we've ordered packages, say, from Amazon or other online companies, and we get these sort of itineraries of what's happening with our package. And it's just really interesting to kind of think about, how does our package get to us? What is the journey of that package? You know, from the fulfillment center, you know, what mode of travel is it taking to the distribution center, to how it gets here, and then the final, you know, to the Denver region, and then the final step to our house. So, the next time you order something online, you know, take a look at that itinerary, and take a look at, you know, what are the implications about, is this, you know, being driven by truck to me, you know, maybe drones in a couple of years? It's just really interesting to think about, again, the implications for our transportation system. On the federal side, the FAST Act side, I'm not going to go through this, there's so many acronyms here. The point is that the FAST Act defined several sort of freight networks and funding programs associated with those freight networks. And it also requires, as it says in the last bullet, state-level freight plans and encouraging state freight advisory committees. And those are two important things that we're going to talk about.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Director Brockett, did you have your hand up?
I did, actually. I had, just to pick up on something you, you said before, sorry to interrupt there. But you talked about the idea of drones. And I, I saw that when we were defining the idea of freight, you were saying we mostly were, we were not focused on air-based freight. But would that be something that we would include as that, as we move forward with that sort of thing? Yeah, it is mentioned in here, and in the transportation plan, we do also have an aviation section.
Mm-hmm.
And cargo and those sorts of things, absolutely.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. On the CDOT side, CDOT is embarking on a, actually, a couple freight plan updates, what they call multimodal freight plan, and then state freight and passenger rail plan. We are going to participate in that effort, particularly in the multimodal freight plan. Although what they're doing is statewide, we're working with CDOT to try and leverage, you know, their consultant, leverage their process, so that we can get sort of a Dr. Cog version of that. And we're going to, as I've said, marry that with the content that's in your packet, and, you know, put that together. And that will, we think, address the freight task in our work program. Because CDOT's multimodal freight plan, that's going to be a, a good year and a half process. It's going to be very comprehensive, everything from data and commodity flows, to looking at, you know, things that you've asked about, like projects, policies, those sorts of things. So, we're going to work hand-in-hand with CDOT on that. CDOT has also established a freight, statewide freight advisory council. This is, to their credit, this has been a sort of wonderful council of folks from all different spectrums of the freight industry, you know, trucking, railroad, every other sort of flavor of the freight industry, as well as, you know, we're on this committee as well, participating in other sort of allied stakeholders. It's been a great forum to hear from those folks directly about what's important to them, what they can do for us, and what we can do for them in the planning process. So, I'm not going to go through the details of the slide, but just to make the point that CDOT has what they call a state freight and passenger rail plan. This is a Federal Railroad Administration requirement. They did this in 2012, so they'll be updating this plan. And then the multimodal freight plan that I mentioned, they're starting to embark on that process as well. They're doing this together in a coordinated effort. And as I said, we'll be working hand-in-hand with CDOT to get sort of the Dr. Cog version of this, whether it's data, whether it's recommendations, whether it's projects, whatever it is, coming out of that process. One of the things that the Freight Advisory Council has been really interested in, has been sort of emphasizing to all of us, is, is there any low-hanging fruit? Are there any easy wins? We know that there's not a lot of money out there right now for, for anything, including freight. What are some things that we can, you know, sort of low-cost things that we can do? So, one thing that came out of an early Freight Advisory Council, this is, sorry, this is I-25 Downtown at Spear. And this is a close-up of the bridge. And you see, you see right here, if you can see my mouse pointer on the left-hand side of the arch with the painted black and yellow, you know, this was a suggestion from them that, you know, for the clearance for trucks going under this sort of older bridge, you know, can we do something to help direct trucks to the middle of the roadway where the arch is the highest? So, CDOT did this. You know, again, this isn't a total fix. You know, someday that bridge is going to have to be replaced. But, you know, this was kind of a cool, innovative thing that probably didn't cost too much more than paint and someone's time to do it. Stakeholder input. So, we have held forums over the years with the freight industry. The Freight Advisory Council, you know, is meeting not quite monthly, but once or twice a quarter now. So, we've gotten a lot of input, both directly from freight industry folks, as well as, as I said, from other stakeholders. And again, I'm not going to go through this in detail, it's in your packet. But, you know, highlighted in red is the idea of roadway congestion. This is intuitive, but the idea here is that, you know, obviously, the freight industry is concerned about their sort of trip times, reliability for, for their cargo, just-in-time deliveries, you know, logistics, those sorts of things. So, it turns out that the things that we do to benefit all of us in our multimodal transportation system, you know, regarding traffic flow operations, ITS, you know, those sorts of things, TDM even, and reducing congestion transit, all of those things that kind of help on our broader goals, also help the freight industry. You know what? I'm not going to go over this, because it's interim, it's one of those many things from the FAST Act. I'll talk about the freight network, but the FAST Act designated an interim freight network. We're working with CDOT to kind of refine this to the best that we can, that the feds will let us, and, and make some technical corrections and refinements. And they will publish a final freight network, I believe, either later this year or next year. That's all I want to say about that. In our... In our Metrovision Regional Transportation Plan, we have traditionally had this map, which shows our rail, air, and intermodal facilities. One piece of guidance from the freight advisory council, we should call them multimodal facilities, so our pipeline terminals, our rail-to-truck transfer facilities, those sorts of things. So we mapped that out. But one of the things that we're trying to do is sort of bring this to life a little bit. You say a pipeline facility, okay, well, whatever. You know, here's an example where we have, and this is in Commerce City, where we have the Irondale Auto Transfer Off 88th, which is the star in the upper right, and we have the pipeline transfer facility kind of below that. And we wanted to kind of illustrate how this all works together, that you've got I-76, you've got State Highway 2, the blue line is 88th, which is one of our National Highway System intermodal connectors that feed off of the freeway, you know, so bringing to life a little bit of how all these pieces kind of work together. In our congestion report, every couple of years, we look at commercial vehicle volumes, so this is back from 2014. Again, without going into a lot of detail on this, it's in the report, but we like, you know, we try to look at commercial vehicle volumes and, you know, what, how that can form on the freight side. We also recently, Dr. Cog led a multi-MPO, basically a front-range MPO effort, stretching from Pueblo to North Front Range MPO in Fort Collins, doing what's called a commercial vehicle survey. So a lot of data, a lot of technical analysis. This is just one of, you know, many sort of graphics from that report, but a really cool sort of partnership effort to try and get a handle on commercial vehicle traffic throughout the front range. Also in our congestion report, every few years, we look at congestion in bottleneck locations, and this is also a NEPA requirement for capacity, roadway capacity projects.
Director Graves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Forgive me, I try to save my questions to the end, but I have to slip out a bit early. Just a couple notes, wondering where the conversation as well about autonomous freight, especially given the Coors delivery recently, was it the Google Coors truck or whatnot? Really cool.
Yeah.
I think he was actually drinking in the back of the truck when it went on autopilot. Second thing, platooning, of course, and then we've had, I thought, conversations with this freight group about looking at shared logistics, so I'm just wondering what those three, what the role is of those three components, the autonomous freight, platooning, and shared logistics.
Yeah, all of those, the freight advisory council have been discussing, definitely on their radar screen, you know, even like, say, platooning, what does that mean for the weight of bridges when you're platooning trucks? Can the bridges handle that increased weight? They're looking at virtual guardrails, you know, you name it, but all those sorts of things are definitely on the radar screen.
Thank you.
So I'll use this map because I think it's actually a little bit more informative than the interim freight network from the FAST Act. Even though this is back from 2010, this doesn't change very much year to year. This is freight flows by highway, railroad, and waterway, and it's kind of what you expect. You can tell the Mississippi here in blue, you can tell sort of the coal coming down from Wyoming. You know, the point here is that we're not the port of Long Beach, we're not Chicago. We do have a lot of freight that comes kind of through Colorado, we're not a big sort of freight state in and of itself, but we definitely have commodities coming through, and it's important, you know, for freight traffic through Colorado. So it's something that we need to pay attention to, even if we're not, as I said, the port of Long Beach, it's still really important in terms of trying to pursue funding and making the case to the feds about, you know, particularly truck traffic. And that's what I'll illustrate here from this commodity flow data. This is from CDOT, they purchased a proprietary dataset. This is a year or two old now, and they'll be updating this in the multimodal freight plan, but this is still the latest that they have. We want to be consistent with them, and this is what we're including in the document that's in your packet. Kind of a takeaway here is that whether you look at tonnage or you look at value, dollar value, about 98% of exports are by truck. So when we talk about freight in Colorado, we're mostly, not entirely, but mostly talking about sort of truck traffic. And here's kind of a map on that as well. And there's lots of maps in the report, I'm not going to go through them now. So again, sort of on the plan side, what's that relationship to our planning work and our Metrovision Regional Transportation Plan? So we do talk about freight, you know, from both a quantitative and qualitative perspective in the plan. So for example, expanding the regional roadway system, removing bottlenecks, and constructing new roads and interchanges, you know, both to accommodate future growth that we're going to have, but, you know, from that freight perspective as well. Constructing railroad crossing grade separations at critical locations, FastTrax is doing some of this, you all are doing some of this, others are doing this in our communities. Providing roadway management and intelligent transportation system applications such as traveler information systems, incident management, variable message signs, that whole sort of piece of technology is a big part of that as well. Speaking of technology, we've all heard of CDOT's RoadX. This is, Director Graves beat me to the punch, this is where I was going to mention and make a joke about the beer truck going down the highway the other day. You know, Denver, I know, is doing things, other communities are doing things in technology. This is evolving really rapidly, but we do want to be cognizant about it. So for example, Director Graves asked about truck platooning, virtual guardrails, all of these sorts of things. You know, the conversation's evolving quickly, but we're trying to capture what we know today and where we think this is going tomorrow. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Director Jones.
Well, just combining those two thoughts, that the evolving technology may greatly impact the strategies you pursue. On the prior slide, where you talk about expanding roadway capacity, that's a pretty, from what I've heard, you might be going in a different direction as we increase efficiencies, and so the capacity expansion might more likely be fine-tuning just how to deal with certain bottlenecks, but you probably won't be if you listen to Shayden Bat expanding capacity nearly as much as we thought based on the evolving technology, so.
Yeah.
Doug?
Yeah, it might be more proper to say maybe increase service flow, right, of the facilities that we have, which can be done through technology, as we know. I mean, they're even talking about as much as, I don't necessarily believe this, but as much as five times the, you can push through the, you know, five times, up to five times the number of vehicles of what we have now on a facility, so.
Not on I-70.
Yeah.
Director Shockley.
So it sort of feels like a whole new segment to get my head around, and if I was a freight company, I would say I need enough roads so that I can get clear from where I am to where I'm going. And the problem is that that doesn't take into account how much stuff costs for us and how much it might cost for them. And one of the things I noticed in this report is that they can't drive on off-peak hours a lot of times because that's when the delivery or pickup agreement is or something, like, well, could you just change the delivery/pickup agreement and drive on? So I feel like the, there might be real efficiencies by looking at what makes sense on both sides of that equation, not just the government fixes the problem, even if it costs a whole lot more that way. And then I also, well, the things like where they're just communication for low-cost fixes, that's like brilliant, and we should totally do that, but then I wonder if there are actually less obvious fixes that, really, is it the passes that are the biggest problem for them? Or, you know, like a broader, so I think that we can come to this with solutions in mind, and I sort of want a sense of actually how much of a problem are the roads for the getting stuff in and out? Like, are we not getting stuff in and out? Is it hurting the companies? Like, I feel like it's actually very complicated, so.
It is, and I can tell you that the freight advisory council has been having that exact conversation. They've actually been prioritizing issues that are important and, you know, potential solutions around those issues so that we can all better understand and get a handle on, as you said, is it the passes? Is it truck parking? Is it time-of-day delivery? Is it a regulatory thing, or a technology thing, or an operational thing, or capacity, or, you know, probably all of the above? But, you know, they're, they actually are going through that with a fine-tooth comb, and CDOT will do as well in the multimodal freight plan. So you're absolutely right.
I have no desire to cut conversation off whatsoever. I'm only pointing out we're at 5:00. We have a hard stop at 5:55 for a 6:00 meeting. Director Sernanek.
Yes. On this one, Jacob, as you're looking at freight, one of the things that impacts our jurisdiction, and we're not probably alone in the region, our home deliveries and what is happening on that front, and it's impacting our major arterials, but also in our neighborhoods. And I would think it would be at least an interesting extension of some of that to deal with it. I took a little survey last week just with regard, the seven usual delivery trucks, which was DHL, UPS, and FedEx, but also home delivery of groceries and other perishables, both milk deliveries and egg deliveries that have occurred. And it seems that folks finding some ways where maybe they're able to handle their commutes without a vehicle, but they're also not necessarily going to the, driving to the grocery store either in what they're doing. And what, so it's not just the non-perishable appliance or other deliveries, but it's also some of the perishable side. And is anything going to come out of this that might provide some illumination into jurisdiction dealing with impact on major arterials, plus the potential for impact on neighborhoods?
Do you want to, an answer right now, or? Because I don't, I don't have a magical answer, except to say that I think in CDOT's multimodal freight planning effort, they are going to look at that whole spectrum of deliveries. And as I said, you know, the idea of what is freight these days and what is, you know, what is a delivery, you know, whether it's an Amazon, or like, I even do Safeway Home Delivery of groceries. So all of those sorts of, and the app-based, you know, these days with an app, you can get anything delivered to you. And so, you know, that question of what types of deliveries and how those deliveries are being made, you know, for example, Safeway actually has a truck, it's sort of a mini truck, but some of these deliveries, like Uber does, Uber Eats now, where they're just using, you know, personal cars. So it's, it's what is, what is being delivered and how is it being delivered to you, absolutely.
So in the queue, I've got Atchison and Teeter. Director Atchison.
Jacob, for those who are looking at, you know, a lot of us end up talking transportation and sitting in on a lot of these, and the technology is running rampant right now. But I think we are starting to get to a point where we're finally going to realize that the technology of the driverless car is not going to replace a lot of cars being on the road. It's actually looking like it's going to add more vehicles to the road, because people who can't drive today will have the option of calling those cars, getting in that car and going where they want to go, where they couldn't before. And somewhat to Phil's point of the delivery, there's a lot of concern that that's going to become a childcare delivery system. They're going to deliver them to school, mom and dad doesn't have to drive anymore, but it's going to add that many more vehicles that we're not planning for. And anytime those cars are out, they're always on the move. So if they're not being used, they may be pulling into a charging station or a station to recharge of some type, but there's that many more of them on our roadway, so our VMT is definitely going to go up because we're going to have more people. And right now, the four-to-six-passenger-type vehicle on driverless is one of the big ones that Volvo and a couple of others are looking at, is how soon can they put that on the road? Because they figure they can do that, they can almost move families around with a family not having to actually own a car.
Director Teeter.
Got to push, got to figure out what button to push over here, I don't use this thing very often. Well, as you know, Commerce City is basically industrial. We, I know all about the transportation for the truck vehicles and stuff, we deal with it every day. Our biggest problem that's coming in the future here, it seems to be the railroad. We have two railroad tracks that come through Commerce City, the BN and the Santa Fe, and but they're bringing in these railroad cars now with 100-plus. It's nothing now to get a car to come through there with over 100 cars on it and double-stacked, and it's killing our intersections over there. And I know what they're all about, moving freight, but if, if we are sitting on this board, I would like us to look at, or at least address, the number of cars that they are putting on the rail now, today, and put a limit on it somewhere. It just keep adding more and more cars, and they're tying up our intersections for 30 minutes. And in fact, when we go back to Washington DC in March, we're going to meet with the railroad, that's going to be one of our topics when we get back there, is the number of cars that they're starting to put on these railroad cars. So if we are on that board, I'd like us to at least address that if we can.
Director Dyke.
Jacob, with Director Teeter's comments, are there any corridors, I know 15, 16 years ago, we had planes to ports with CDOT, there was a rumored super slab that maybe addressed some of those, had rail, as well as, as well as a tollway. Are there things like that on the horizon, or has, with the planes to ports, do we know the progress of how CDOT has furthered that mission?
Yeah, some of those are still out there. Ports to planes, I think is one of those that CDOT is still working on.
Reference super slab. Thank you for bringing that up, because that was a combination of rail, toll for trucks, totally a private, as opposed to CDOT initiative. And the key place was Douglas County, and there's a landowner in Douglas County that single-handedly stopped it. Now, he has a mortality, which is coming up soon, maybe, and that could change.
Any other questions at this time? Mr. Christman? I'm sorry? Oh, what is super slab?
Yeah.
Okay. Ron, would you like to explain it?
Super slab was a concept created by the late Ray Wells, who was very well-known for development on a large infrastructure scale. And he put together the idea of being about, what, Roger, 15 miles east roughly, of 25, going through what is now land that was not used, and it would have about every 100 miles a truck stop that would service the long-haul truckers and the railroads would go through. This would free up the railroad that goes through Tealville in Castle Rock to passenger traffic from Casper to Santa Fe. So that, that's basically the concept, and it's probably was in its highlight about 20 years ago.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you very much, Mr. Rieger.
Thank you.
So on to agenda item number six, which is attachment C, and we are going to turn this over to Mr. Calvert.
You are certainly getting death by PowerPoint tonight, so I apologize for that. So this is the final blow, I wish I could have like a "blah-ha-ha" sort of thing. I will also try to be hyper-efficient in sort of going through the slides, because obviously we do want to get to discussion, but I also understand this is a topic that we're, we have a lot of people around the table that are sort of in an active learning stage here, so please do not let my desire to be hyper-efficient mean that I'm blowing past something that you need to know more about. I would say that really this presentation is going to cover kind of status of where we are in the sort of conversation about how to improve the urban growth boundary program. There's a little bit of background, some context. There's a fair amount of the presentation that really is about visualizing attachment one. Attachment one is existing policy on the books that has been previously adopted by the Board of Directors, but sometimes that half a page is really confusing, so I spend a fair amount of time sort of walking you through a series of scenarios to really hopefully bring that to life a little bit, then obviously we'll have some discussion as well. So this is what I just said, so I can skip that. So you've seen this slide before, but, you know, when we think about sort of the program improvements that we are going to ultimately work with you to determine for the urban growth boundary area program, there really kind of are three things, three buckets that we think about. The first is that development classification system, so how we actually determine land that is already urban today. That is something that we talked about last month, that you all said, go ahead and work with your own local staff to figure out kind of what a technical approach might be to improve that process and come back to you, so that is already started. The other bucket is really... The other bucket is really the allocation process, how we actually invite, why we, I mean you, invite jurisdictions around the region to request additional UGB. We anticipate bringing that to this group in January or so. And then there's a fair amount kind of in maintenance, which really is going to be today's topic. And we are specifically going to focus on the issue of annexation and how cities and counties and how the UGB that they own can be impacted by annexation. One thing that came up at the very tail end of the meeting last month was just to give you a high-level schedule of how long we anticipate this policy level conversation taking. Sort of brass tacks, we anticipate we can probably have a revised policy document for the board to consider in probably the May or June timeframe. But obviously, there are several conversations that we want to have with this group along the way. As I mentioned, you know, you said in October, go ahead and start kind of that technical conversation. That work is already commenced. We actually had a webinar with many of your staff last Friday to kind of brief them about what we're trying to accomplish, make sure this is something they want to participate in. We had 26 folks from 20 jurisdictions, so pretty fair coverage, participate in that webinar. And so again, we're moving as quick as we can with the hope that we can really sort of initiate the allocation process as soon as maybe the July timeframe of next year, which of course will be here before you know it. So a little bit about context that I think is probably important for folks to maybe orient yourself to as we, as the conversation begins. The Growth and Development Supplement, which again outlines this program and is board-adopted policy, sets the stage for kind of the value system of the UGB program. And this is something that previous boards spent quite a bit of time on. For today's conversation, it really are kind of these three high-level themes that kind of spoke to staff, that flexibility is really important, the regional 30,000-foot level is really important, and then balancing rigor and simplicity is important. Unfortunately, those all sound good sort of on their own, but you can imagine a situation where flexibility, rigor, and simplicity sort of conflict with each other. How do you find the place that ultimately you feel pretty good about each of those measures? So keep that in mind, and we'll revisit this again sort of prior to your discussion. So this is something that you've seen before, but I think it's important to point out, when we talk about urban growth boundary or urban growth area in this region, we are talking about not only future urban growth, but also what's currently urban today. I think a lot of people get, just think that we're talking about the future, but we also need to reflect on the fact that we have many, many, many square miles in our region that are currently urban. And this in many ways is the focus of that technical group that I alluded to earlier to give you kind of a visual of this. The technical process that we are working on with that group of your staff is really sort of kind of understand how, what's the best process to map and identify currently urban land. And really, there's a policy conversation about that future urban growth and how, you know, what is the magnitude of future urban growth going forward that is, that ultimately works for the region? What processes is used to evaluate requests for additional future urban growth? These are all things that will be brought before this group over the next few months. And again, those two things together ultimately kind of come to what we think of as the total urban growth boundary or urban growth area for the Denver region. Another thing you've seen before, but just a really good reminder, I throw out the word urban a lot, and I think people have a certain definition of urban. When it comes to the UGB program, it is all sorts of contexts, many of which people would probably classify as suburban. But we look at a wide variety of land use intensities and types and really do classify them as urban, whether that's the CBD to sort of Ken Caro Valley. I mean, there's all sorts of places around the region that through this program are classified as urban that again, maybe that doesn't necessarily match with your own sort of visual expectation of what those places might look like. So as I mentioned, you know, we are focusing on a technical exercise related to current urban. So you may be asking yourself, well, where does future urban growth come from? How do we identify those places in the region? Ultimately, it comes from you and your jurisdictions, right? You determine your need for future urban growth based on your own local plans, priorities, policies, the ability to support it with infrastructure investments. That's really ultimately at the beginning, the genesis, a local conversation. And really, there's this process to inform the region or Dr. Cog about sort of your anticipated growth needs going forward. Really, local governments determine where. You have a significant amount of flexibility to move urban growth boundary around. You may tell us this year that we anticipate to grow in this area of town, and things change. And so you can come back to us and say, never mind, that's a landowner that maybe is going to go in a different direction. We actually anticipate urban growth happening somewhere else. And that is entirely sort of your call. And again, we are simply the sort of the metaphor that we use, we're the accountant. Just make sure and tell us so that we can keep the books in order. Some key context things when it comes to UGB and annexation. We are talking about UGB and annexation, but I think it's important to know the majority of the time that when we see annexations, actually, UGB is not involved. So don't think that we're talking about every instance of annexation involves UGB. That's just simply not the case. But obviously, it is a pretty important issue. The other thing that some people maybe are not aware of, but cities actually can identify urban growth boundary outside their existing jurisdiction. So they could have a situation where they have annexed into the unincorporated county, but they're actually annexing land that they had previously identified as their own urban growth boundary. So really, there's no, there's nothing to resolve or reconcile in that case. And the other important piece of context is that oftentimes when we see annexations or when we do our sort of backcasting analysis, the annexation actually involves what we call currently urban land. So land that through our computer models has already said, this is urban today. And that has some, that's a different path along the decision tree, which we'll spend a little bit of time on in a second. So for those that were here last month, I also got to present, the pleasure to present with Jacob, and he fessed up that he had one slide that was really hard to talk about. So I did the same. This is my, this is my hard slide this month, so bear with me. You know, when we've talked about this, the idea of ownership of UGB to me can get a little muddled. When you talk about future growth, I think it's unequivocally, it belongs to that local jurisdiction, right? It should match plans, policies, priorities. And I, you know, and you can, as the note here says, jurisdiction is responsible or has, is entitled to move those urban growth boundaries as plans, priorities, market conditions change. Going to the bottom half of the slide, there's also the reality that when you think about urban growth in this region and in your communities, it is about the land. It is about land use, how the land is actually developed. And so it's fair to think at some point, that land has become urban and it's, that UGB is locked to that specific piece of land. You can't make it un-urban. It is already, you know, pretty densely developed. You can't necessarily move it anymore. So there is this piece of ownership that really is about the jurisdiction for future. But when you get down to sort of the real crux of currently urban land, really, it's about that piece of property. So there is, there is sort of this notion that you can't really necessarily move it with jurisdictions. It really stays with the land. And so as the jurisdictional boundaries change, then really maybe some of the accounting has to change to reflect that that land is currently urban as of today. So that was just kind of a keep in mind sort of thing because I think it does maybe color the conversation a little bit. We are going to walk, so this is in essence Attachment One, sort of a decision tree version of that. I am going to actually pass this out for the folks in the room. I know we've got a few people on the call because we're going to run through a few scenarios, and maybe you like want to remind yourself about this slide, but it's kind of hard to go back. So I'm going to pass around a hard copy just so that you can sort of follow along as we go down different paths along the decision tree. And that's what happens when you think about a handout on Monday and forget about it when the meeting starts. So sorry that this was not at your place when you got here. So I mean, again, various sort of ways the decisions can flow. And again, this is really basically reflecting what's in Attachment One. If there is an IGA in place, we really basically, as Dr. Cog, as the accountant, want to be informed, and the IGA is going to tell us what to do with that UGB. You know, the slide notes that in some ways, this is a standard practice for communities to have IGAs between the county and municipalities. You know, we don't really think that UGB is a key piece of those IGAs, but generally, how annexation gets treated is something that is covered. And so that oftentimes makes the conversation between the city and the county as to what to do with impacted UGB a little bit simpler. I mean, I think it's important, when we talk about annexation, please think of UGB as secondary. I mean, there are laws and statutes and common practices associated with annexation. That's certainly primary. The UGB conversation is really secondary, and we as Dr. Cog and as the region simply kind of want to be informed. So if there's an IGA in place that governs this, it's a simple process for these, the impacted communities to tell us how to handle that UGB. Doesn't happen a lot, but that is out there. So now going kind of down the decision tree of, okay, there's not an IGA in place. This is, if the land is developed, the really, the way that that policy is written, there's really kind of one path forward. And that if, if the land is developed and it is in the county's UGB, UGA, you ultimately are subtracting it from the county allocation and adding it to the city's allocation. And so I'm going to use a couple of visuals just to kind of help you get a handle of what that looks like. So in this completely fabricated example, on the left, you've got city. On the right, you've got county. The purple grid cells are currently urban, already have some amount of development, either vertical development or platted and subdivided land that has every anticipation of being urban in the not-too-distant future, whereas the green is actually kind of areas that either the city or the county has identified as future growth areas. You can also see sort of the tabular piece here as well. So in this case, this is pre-annexation. Fast forward, the city has, in this case, annexed 25 square miles into the county, but every single one of those square miles is actually currently urban already. So if you follow kind of the tabular thing that happened here, sort of, and I can go back, and actually, there's another example that I'll sort of tie it together. You know, this is a situation where the county's current, because you are covering both current and future with UGB, their current UGB has gone down because that's now in the city. That's sort of the city's responsibility. But the actual future area has not been impacted whatsoever. So if the county is concerned that they want, continue to have areas to grow in the future, that really has not been impacted by an annexation that annexes developed land. So to kind of show you what that looks like sort of in tabular fashion, again, the city started with 150, annexed 25 square miles, so their current went up. The county's current went down by that corresponding 25 square miles, but in neither case, did the future amount of urban growth change. So in some ways, this notion that the county is losing UGB, if you really are focused on UGB as future, that really doesn't necessarily play out in this scenario. I'd like to pause for a second to see if there are any questions because I'm going to use similar scenarios before. So if this isn't working, we could probably maybe answer a few questions, and that might help with the next round.
Director Kneec.
Thank you. This, I think, makes perfect sense to me, but I just have one question, which is that this kind of approach or this scenario relies on us having really good mapping of the current urbanized. And we still, that's a piece that we're still working on.
Correct.
Right. So, okay. I just want to clarify that.
Absolutely.
Director Partridge.
So Brad, with your example there, just looking at, are you making the assumption that the land in the county is already designated with a density?
So what, and we talk about this in a slide later, there is some confusing terminology, right? When we talk about urban, we often use the term, the policy uses the term developed land, which gives you this sort of expectation that you see vertical development there. It's actually, there has been a decision beyond sort of policy. I mean, there's been a decision that has subdivided the land or is actually vertical development. So there is a real expectation that there will be density on that site that would ultimately meet that urban threshold, right? Which, as described in the images previously, isn't a particularly dense threshold, right? It's one dwelling unit per acre or less on the residential side of things. So really, in this case, so let's take this example. This means the county has already zoned something, platted something, or development has actually come out of the ground that would be qualified as urban. So therefore, they have to cover it with UGB because it's existing urban.
Other questions or clarifications at this point?
We will roll forward. So that was, the answer to the question was yes to is it developed land within the county? In this case, we're now going to run through a series of scenarios where the answer to that question is no, right? There has not been vertical development. There has not been subdivision. There's not been anything that suggests that there is an imminent sort of conversion of that land to an urban use. I think it's important to note, when this says joint determination, that means Dr. Cog, the accountant, is expecting the city and the county to work this out and simply just kind of let us know kind of what the path forward is. That Attachment One spells out three options, A, B, C. I think it's actually simpler to talk about this going from CBA, so bear with me if that completely throws you off, but I am going to go sort of in reverse order here.
Do we have to turn them upside down?
Yeah, turn them upside down, flip them over, whatever works for you. So we're going to use the same sort of schematic example as before. Everything looks the same, city on the left, county on the right. Purple means currently urban. Green means it's an area that's been designated for future urban development. So in Option C, what really happens is that, let me make sure I get my notes here right. So the city has annexed these same 25 square miles, but in that process, the city has no expectation to actually have that land develop at an urban intensity. They've annexed the land, but they actually don't anticipate ever having to cover it with UGB. They don't anticipate urban development happening. In that case, basically, the city says to the county, that 25 square miles should stay with you. And then the county has the option to, would likely do this, would retain that urban growth boundary and then can move it. So city annexes, doesn't actually expect urban development to happen. County retains that urban, that future urban growth boundary. When would that happen? That was the question, and trust me, I get it. Yes, we've scratched our head at that as well. When would that actually happen? Good point.
Director Teal. To secure water rights. Director Brockin.
And Boulder has done that in a couple of instances to establish contiguity between two separate pieces of urban land. We've annexed open space in between the two, so.
Good questions and comments. Love it.
Director Teeter.
And floodplains, so we have an area like that in the floodplain that we've, turning into a trail and around the parks and stuff.
Okay. Brad?
So that was Option C. Again, reversing order here. So Option B, same area is annexed by the city. In this case, what the city has decided is that they have annexed this area in the county. They actually do anticipate that they would, that they would see urban development in that impacted area. But they may have other areas of the city that is current, that are currently covered by UGB that they no longer anticipate to actually develop at an urban scale. So that they then have the ability to say, we actually will cover that UGB, that area with our own UGB. So they do what we call flexing. They take that 25 square miles and remove it from some other portion of the city and move it to the area that the city annexed. So again, in that same instance, the county is able to maintain and keep those 25 square miles and to move it as they see fit.
Questions on that one? Okay.
So, and then Option A, sort of working again backwards. I think it's important to note, B and C, all of these are sort of a joint determination of options. So both B and C require city and county to get together, tell Dr. Cog, this is what we've done. This is how we anticipate the UGB stuff to sort of shake out. Unfortunately, we also need a path forward that is, okay, what if we don't hear something? What is the default? And this Option A is in some ways what we kind of think of as the default. There's an annexation that happens, UGB is impacted, the city and the county do not come to Dr. Cog and tell us that we are going to do either Option B or C. And so therefore, we end up with Option A, which in this case, you are seeing that in fact, the county had previously said that they are going, they anticipate urban growth in that area in the future. City has annexed, and there is a transfer between, from the county to the city. So in this case, unlike the first example that we showed, you actually see the county's future urban growth area decreasing, right? So this is, this is a situation where there is actually less future urban growth for the county, which again, as I mentioned, has to somewhat act like, act as the default. So really, we have to hear that B and C are the options that are really going to happen for us to not really sort of go down this path.
Director Jones.
Sorry to take us back, but Option B, you said the county can move this wherever it it wants, is that true? It doesn't have to be contiguous with any existing development, it can be anywhere in the county?
They can move it anywhere they want, under current policy.
Well, that doesn't make any sense, but, I'm a county, but, I mean, to be able to move it into the middle of nowhere where there's not services, hopefully counties wouldn't, but that doesn't make for a compact regional land use pattern.
And again, the, the expectation is that this is really a reflection of local growth priorities, and to your point, maybe that, that growth model from the county's perspective actually doesn't make a lot of fiscal or intuitive sense, so the, the risk of that happening is maybe pretty limited.
Director Christman, and then Kneec.
If you have a default in which the city gets the entire allocation, have you created an incentive for them not to agree? Because if the city doesn't agree, they get all of it.
So this is, if you, if you were to sneak ahead, either in the memo or in the presentation, that is something that we've heard from this group, we haven't had this specific conversation, but this issue has come up a few times in other venues, and that question was asked, is what compels a city to work with the county to, to end up with option B or C? And that is a reasonable question to ask.
Yeah, because this would, in my opinion, although it's not an issue for Cherry Hills, obviously, it would compel a city to just sit on its hands and take the default.
Director Kneec.
I'm just going to respond to Director Jones's question about, you know, moving it anywhere, and I think the one example is that for some jurisdictions, like Denver out at DIA, the rail lines or transit corridors, in some ways, have created a natural pull for some development between areas that are urbanized along a transit line. So, for example, there are no services along that, that, that line, but it, you know, there is TOD development now where there wouldn't have ever made any sense to put in all that infrastructure because there wasn't that transit infrastructure. And I, I would guess some of the places along the northern lines might be similar. It doesn't mean you necessarily want to urbanize everything along those lines, but to the extent you're thinking about places to grow, I mean, so, so if we have that conversation, that might be the, you know, it might be that it's, you know, it's, it's not, it's either contiguous to where there is other growth or services, or where you have a potential for an urban center, right, that has the alignments that we talk about elsewhere in metrovision, so, just a thought.
Okay. Brad?
So the question that just came up about, you know, why would a city sort of go down this, this path of B or C, and why wouldn't they just simply take the UGB? So I hate to put it in this term, so, but the reality is, they're actually, in the program now, there, there are mechanisms that the county has that you could call our sort of defense, right? So I'll talk about that here in a second. Again, these are things that are, that are already in the current policy. So you, when you see this program, you see it UGB slash A. For a long time, it was just UGB, it just meant urban growth boundary. Decade or so ago, if not more, the program was revised to, to introduce this concept of urban growth area, and so in some ways, this is something that counties can, can use to sort of protect future urban growth if they are, they're interested, and I'll talk a little bit about, about this as well. So you can see the list at the bottom, sort of, UGB communities are, by, by and large, the, the, the way that folks typically handle UGB, but we do have, I don't know, eight or nine UGA communities, urban growth area communities, I think there's four counties, and I'll describe kind of the differences between these two in very general terms, because there really, frankly, isn't that much difference. UGB communities, the urban growth boundary communities, really, their simple, their obligation is that their allocation of future growth areas, they map every square mile of it, right? So if they have 10 square miles, they keep Dr. Cog informed about where they anticipate that growth happening. They obviously have the ability to move that around as circumstances change, as we've talked about before.
Director Brockin.
And where, where can we find those maps? Are there, is there a central repository?
Sure, yes, we, 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 we maintain that. I, I wish I could say that they're as good as they could be, much like the, the currently developed urban area. And the other thing that is interesting, and I'll mention this on the UGA communities piece, so they, they provide Dr. Cog with informal maps that really sort of suggest where they anticipate growing, that maybe they haven't committed, and so our obligation to them is that we won't necessarily share those without their permission. So we have data on this and mapping, but I would say the variability kind of depends on the comfort level of that community and us sharing it, and also how, how much they've kept it up to date. It is not unusual for communities to reach out to us and say, tell us where our UGB is, and our reaction is, I hope you know, because you're, you're responsible for informing us, we will send you what we have the last time we heard from you, but that oftentimes initiates a local conversation about maybe where it, where it should be.
Great, thanks. Well, I'd put in a request for our next iteration on this topic, to get links to the maps that are publicly available, I think that'd be very helpful. Thank you.
So, and I hinted a little bit about kind of what that difference is between UGB and UGA. Really, it's that, so let's take that same example of 10 square miles, the expectation is that a UGA community doesn't necessarily have to share with Dr. Cog where they're going to, they anticipate every square inch of that UGB to, to occur in the future. They, they figure out, you know, during a develop, during the development process, what, when they would choose to commit UGB to sort of say, we feel pretty confident that this is actually going to be urban-scale development, that could be its zoning, that could be its subdivision, that could be its some other public decision, but that is within their right to also hold back UGB as well. And again, their responsibility is to keep us informed about their general thinking of where that's going to happen, mostly because this is really tied to regional forecasting and the planning work that we do here. You know, we don't want to leave a bunch of square miles of urban growth sort of out of the sort of regional context of the conversations that we have about growth in the region. So again, I'll use these, these same schematic examples, again, left is the city, right is the county. In this case, you can see this is a UGA county, so they have come to Dr. Cog, and there are a few places that they have said, we're going to commit UGA here, or UGB, maybe there's, zoning's already happened, subdivision's already happened, they have every expectation this will be urban in the future, and they have other areas that they have, maybe their planning would be urban in the future, but they have not necessarily reached that development stage that, that triggers their own commitment. So in this case, same annexation area, really, because the county has not committed UGB, they actually have that same opportunity to, to move it again to areas in the county that maybe are sort of their next line of anticipated growth. The thing that, to keep this in mind is, you will also note that this annexation area no longer has any UGB, right? So if the city were to annex this, the county were to move their uncommitted UGB, if the city anticipated urban development, they would be responsible for either requesting a UGB from Dr. Cog, or they would be, they would have to flex that from some other area in their community. I know that was a lot. We got a question, Robin.
Director Kneec.
Can you just clarify that, these, these last two are current policy?
Yes.
And current defenses are?
The only thing that we're sharing with you tonight are, is current policy, and in fact, I would say the discussion questions are even upper level from that, for us to kind of hear from you, intent, expectations, that sort of thing, so that we can try to reconcile what we hear from this group with, with existing policy to either come back with changes or things that maybe should be held because they still seem like they, they make sense based on the comments from this group.
Director Rakowski.
There are five, you know, planning organizations in the state, two of them border us, do we talk to them about UGB?
We do not, the, I do not. It's a good, but, we, for sure, absolutely.
Or is this an item of legislative interest? That's for the, I add your opinion.
So I'll just interject real quick that one of the reasons, and I think we've talked about this a little bit, but one of the reasons why this is so important for this board to consider and make decisions on is, well, there's several things in my mind, one is that because of term limits, we all know that this board changes dramatically year to year, and so the, probably the last speaker is the only one that was on this board the last time this topic was, was taken up. So I, I think that, you know, it's an education process for us, I, I would encourage people to go back to their, you know, to the extent that you can, that you can or have it, go back to your staff and, and, and have the conversation about what your municipality or county's stance is on some of this stuff. But I think that since we, you know, staff has the institutional knowledge of what happened last time, and the institutional knowledge that they can share to get us to a starting point, but then, you know, it's incumbent on us to take it from that, and, and it's, it is, it is a little bit drinking out of a fire hose to understand it all, but I think that they do a really good job to help us get to the point that we can start making those policy decisions. Director Teal.
So I guess where, where I would kind of like to, to see the discussion go, to see where our actions that the board takes goes, is kind of along the lines, we saw that Castle Rock and Douglas County are both urban growth area jurisdictions. And so I know, we, actually Roger and I have had to become acquainted due to a development that is going, is up for annexation in Castle Rock, we've kind of had, become acquainted with where our annexation zone is, that we already have an agreement with Douglas County on. And I guess what I would be interested in our final action as we go through this, is making sure we do actually have the board, the board is open for a review, for, you know, places like Castle Rock, Douglas County, where we have already made agreements between the two jurisdictions on where our urban growth area is going to be, and just making sure that that tally has stayed current. Because, I mean, you know, Roger can speak to it very well, the fact that there are parts of Douglas County that we hope to remain rural for the foreseeable future, but around Parker, around Castle Rock, around Lone Tree, we do have dedicated urban areas. So I guess with where the discussion would go, I'd just like to see us make sure that we're doing a review, and that once the jurisdictions come forward with what that urban growth boundary is, urban growth area is, it, it is indeed considered and adopted by the board to bring us up to speed.
Director Sernanik.
Yes, as I understand, our UGB, UGA, it's voluntary. So Brad, maybe talk about what happens if a jurisdiction, whether a city or a county, looks to develop something that is not within the UGB or UGA, what are the consequences?
There is nothing in existing policies that suggests there are consequences for that potential scenario.
Other than the walk of shame?
Correct. We, Andy Taylor, planner, he's my phone or friend for this, if we, when we get to the discussion, we oftentimes, he's our UGB expert, much smarter on this stuff than I am, we talk about it as, it's, it's good faith, it's peer pressure, it is, it is simply that this board has, it's voluntary and you have compelled yourselves to, to, to do this, right? So you ultimately are accountable to each other, simple as that. So there are a few other slides that I think we kind of covered in, in some of the discussions, so these are the discussion questions that, that really we, we put forward, obviously you can take the discussion, the direction that you feel is, is most appropriate. There, the, the versions of these questions in the packet are actually longer and have a little bit more detail, but I just, to kick it off, I will sort of read something that is kind of a paraphrase from, again, those key overarching directives that, that the board has set for us dating back to really kind of the late 2000s that I think maybe helps, may help with this conversation. So the UGBA criteria should avoid an overly structured, one-size-fits-all solution. Previous boards have, have, you know, compelled staff to think about the UGB program in that way. The appropriate role for the Dr. Cog Board and Collaborative Growth Management is at a 30,000-foot level, which could include issues where Dr. Cog has standing and expertise like coordinating regional transportation infrastructure development and articulating and working toward the region's vision for growth and development. And then this one, I think, actually may be verbatim. There is a desire for both rigor and simplicity. The ideal approach provides appropriate information for regional decision-making while minimizing staff time and allowing each, each community to speak to its unique circumstances. So that has been, in some ways, the guiding framework, or portion of the guiding framework for at least the last decade or so, and so we would love to use these discussion questions to affirm, confirm, you know, on this particular topic of annexation, you know, what do you sort of see as your sort of values related to this, so that we can make sure and come back to you with potentially some, 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 some solutions that, that get us closer if we're not there now?
So logistically, I'll just point out that we have 10 minutes to a hard stop. Director Sernanik.
I think it would be good to have some, a good discussion, solid discussion on those, on those principles, and possibly bring in folks that were there at the beginning to have some of that discussion, given that some of us may be even transplants to the region or previously unaware of, of some of this, because as, as we talk about voluntary compliance, we need to really understand the richness of, of what these values might represent and have that understanding. And so I would encourage us to reach back and, to some extent, and get to that as a, as a solid base.
I, I think some of the people would come back only in shackles, but, Director Kneec.
Thanks. I, I'm trying to get my head around the second bullet, and, and so I just want to clarify that last scenario we went to. So right now, the, the defensive option from a county to move, you know, before the city takes their allocation, is only available in the UGA?
Correct.
Okay, so the only thing I want to say is that your chart says county can move UGB slash A. So the flow chart is confusing with that regard, so, so, so the question you're asking there is, should UGB and UGB, UGA both have that ability? Is that the question you're asking?
Yeah, but I, this is where the terms, UGB and UGA are, are different in approach, but in concept, they're the same thing, you're still talking about future area for urban growth. UGA is just a different approach about how ultimately they keep us informed, so the terminology ultimately gets thrown around interchangeably.
Okay, but this is really important, because your question makes no sense. So if, so I guess, it's, it's one or the other, either both UGBA and UGA counties can exercise the option or they can't. And so if they both can do it, then your second question makes no sense.
Only UGA counties can, can do this.
Okay, so then the chart really does need to say UGA, not UGB slash A, because no matter how fuzzy it is, if the option is available to one and not the other, the question you are asking is, should it be available to both? So, so fuzzy in concept is one thing, but if the rule is, is available to one and not the other, then we need to be very clear that that's what you're asking.
I get the sense Andy's going to pull me out of this.
Yeah, really what would happen in this case is that the city wouldn't even know that the UGA was there. It would be something that, that the county has committed just on, on what they've said to us. It's unofficial, it's, it's really not yet committed or tied to that land, so in this case, they wouldn't, the city wouldn't even know it was there, and this, and that's, that's really the protection. They're both, both completely flexible approaches, but we can make that flow chart a little bit clearer on that point about flexibility.
Okay. That, I'm still, either, either, either you can do it no matter what, or you're asking us whether we should make a rule change to say you can do it, and I'm still not clear what you're asking. It needs to be like, I, I don't know, I'm just, we can't give you guidance if you're not clear on what the current rule is.
Yes, okay.
So, does that make sense?
I'm not necessarily following where the disconnect is, so do you want to try it one more time?
Okay, so we have.
And when you say chart, which chart are you?
Okay, so we have seven counties.
Yep.
Some are UGA, some are UGB. You've both made the point that they kind of work the same.
Yes, okay.
Okay, so, so this is the really simple question, can every county, right now, regardless of whether it's UGB or UGA, exercise the option of moving their, their allocation? If they can, then there's no need for a policy discussion about treating all the, so, so you've, you've at one point said, do you want to treat all counties the same, and at another point, you said we're already kind of able to do it no matter what. So you, you have contradicted yourself, is my.
Sure, I, I think I get it now, but I think you might do a better job.
Yes, there's, there's, a lot of times what we're doing is looking at this after the fact. So from, from our perspective as Dr. Cog's staff, we're trying to piece together what happened after the fact.
Right.
So if we didn't find out that the county had moved it, we're just assuming that it was, it was there. was there, it was committed, and it's transferred. So that's the hard part about this.
That's a fact-specific scenario, though, and I think, I mean, I guess, I'm sorry if I'm being a little bit overly lawyerly here, but that's what I do.
Well, you're a lawyer.
If you're asking us to have a conversation about the rules, I need you to be really specific on what the rules are. What happens when the facts go awry is a totally different issue. I mean, the thing about when you're debating a rule is, you kind of have to throw out all of the fuzzies, and you just have to say, "Here's the rule. Do you want to keep the rule or change the rule?" You can tell me all the places the rule goes wrong, but you can't tell me, "Here are the 16 places where I didn't even know about this thing, so the rule couldn't apply." That's just, you know what I mean, it's too much of an outlier. So if we're going to have a good policy discussion, we need to be talking about what the rule is...
Yep.
And what the rule should be. And you can't confuse me...
Sure.
With the 16 cases where the rule didn't even get applied because you never knew what happened. We just have to throw that out for now.
Well, I will use a single case here.
Okay.
This example that we just used, which is a UGA county...
Right.
This option is not available to a UGB county.
Okay, so let's be really clear then. So you are asking, should it be?
They would have already, so the way that they would have handled it is, they would have said, "This is UGB, and we have committed to it."
Okay.
Right? If they knew about the annexation well ahead of time, maybe they could decide to flex it and move it somewhere else. But if it just sort of shows up on their doorstep and they don't have the time to sort of do that, that's where that potentially Option A kicks in, and they are going to lose that future growth area to the city.
Okay.
If they are UGA, and they have this expectation that they are going to have future urban growth here but have not officially committed it, they have a lot more flexibility at that time to sort of say, "Well, we have unofficially informed Dr. Cog, this is where we anticipate future urban growth, but obviously now we would move that."
So the very narrow question you want us to debate is, should UGB counties be allowed to move it the way that UGA can?
Actually, I would describe it as, should all counties be required to be UGA? Just simple that that's how we should think about counties...
Okay.
As UGA.
Got it, thanks.
Director Shakti.
I don't have a question.
Director Teal.
So for my two cents, should the region's UGBA, UGB slash A be able to grow without board action? Yeah, I do. I do think that that is in the affirmative, just because, you know, we're all managing our land use. And so, yeah, I don't believe that's something that the board should have involvement in. Should not be done with board action. Involvement, yes. Information, yes. Board action, no. And then, yeah, I'm great, I live in a county that has a UGA. It's wonderful. It's great. I'll tell you that right now. I'd say yes to, just let's think about the counties just having UGA, because it strikes me, didn't we have a decision with Arapahoe County here in the last 12 months, and, you know, where the board did not side with their request, and it seemed to have hinged on the fact that they were a UGB as opposed to a UGA?
Director Stolzmann.
Thank you. I apologize if you've explained this very well, and I just didn't understand, but if you could go back to the last chart with the UGA. If there were dark purple squares, not the regular color purple, but dark purple squares next to the city where you have light blue squares, even though that's not developed, but it's been quote-unquote committed, then would that go to the city?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Director Jones.
Well, I guess, you know, in discussing these key policy questions, I think it's helpful to go back to what we're trying to accomplish, and whether or not our tool of UGB and A is helping, as it is currently constructed, is helping achieve the goals that we're trying to achieve as a region. You know, and going up 30,000 feet again, the reason we do this is because a compact land use pattern that expands methodically according to services and planning is the most efficient way from every metric that we have, from tax dollars to air quality to water, et cetera. That is the smart way for our region to plan. And so then I would go, and if those are still our goals, A, is the UGBA that we currently have constructed accomplishing in that very well or not? And what would changing it do? And I feel like you're asking us two different, we're answering different pieces of the different bullets at the same time. Should the region's UGBA be able to grow without board action? Well, that, if we're trying to have a compact, methodical land use pattern as a region, probably not, assuming that the tool that we are using is effective at achieving that. Whether or not all counties should be UGA, that will lead to an automatic increase in the available urban growth area. Is that helpful to us in achieving a compact growth pattern? Not necessarily, but there's inequity between cities and counties. So anyway, at the risk of being redundant, I think we need to be, have our goals in sight about what we're trying to accomplish, and then go back and measure these policy questions against that, rather than, gee, what would make it more fair? I mean, that's a piece of it, but I don't think we can just answer these without that larger context.
So real quick, I'll point out that the last meeting we had was basically the very high-level introduction. This is getting into some of the conversation of direction that we want to give staff to bring forward next time, and we will continue this conversation and policy discussion at the next meeting. Director Malley.
And I apologize that I was not at the meeting where this may have been discussed, but what I am struggling with is whether this is a high-level accounting exercise or actually achieving the goals as well-stated by Director Jones, because frankly, I think the market is driving compact development, and it's, irregardless of what action this body takes, that is the future of development, because it just makes sense. Long gone are the days where people wanted their piece of the pretty way the heck out there, and they developed, and we're not doing that anymore. And I guess I'm just curious what the next version of UGA is going to be in the planning community. I mean, I understand why this body adopted UGB slash A at the time it adopted, because there was sprawl going on everywhere. I don't see us facing that same problem today, so I guess I'm, my question is more fundamental. What problem are we trying to solve with this? Because I don't think it's occurring anymore.
Doug?
Well, I just might wrap this up. I know we've got to go to another meeting here, at least some of us do. Now, we won't be meeting again as a work session until January. Just to remind you all that our board meeting in December will be held at the same time as the work session on December 7th, so it's at 4:00 on December 7th. But in the interim, we know there's a lot of new people, these are complicated topics we're talking about. It's like calculus, right? But once you get it, you'll get it. So we will be more than happy to come out and speak with you all individually, with you and your staff, to help explain this to you, so you have a full understanding. Because we want everybody to be on the same page as we go forth with the future discussions on this. So just please reach out to myself or Brad, and we'll be happy to arrange that.
Last comments or questions? Director Jones.
I just want to clarify the point about the December board meeting, is where we're going to adopt Metrovision?
Correct. That's the proposal.
So I just want, ideally, we're going to consider adoption. Let me clarify that. Wishful thinking on my part, but it's going to be at a different time than our normal board meeting, and it's really important that everybody shows up. This will be the biggest decision we've made in a long time, and it's really important for everybody to have their voice at the table. At 4:00.
Pearl Harbor Day.
Yes. Both PNA and finance and budget will be meeting after meetings are necessary.
Will be if meetings are necessary.
Yeah. Correct.
Seriously?
Okay, then at 5:59, we are adjourned.
You entered access code...